Well, how's that different than right now? She could do the same thing.
Exactly. So just receive less pay, that's all.
Good morning. I'm going to call our county board meeting to order if you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please, Beth.
Sure. Commissioner Shlangen, Commissioner Heinon, Commissioner Johnson,
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski,
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
All right, move on to approval of our agenda. Is there any amendments, Monty?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have two as consent items, number 11 and number 12. Number 11 would be the 2024 tobacco license applications. Number 12 being the Board of Adjustant Planning Commission and solid waste advisory committee appointments. And that's all we have, sir.
Thank you.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion second to approve our amended agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing not all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Polls is carried. County board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. County Board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the Board Chair's consent for addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the Chair. So as we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate. Open forum, Beth, we have anybody with us this morning? Thank you. All right, move on to our consent agenda, items 1 through 12.
Move approval?
Second. Motion second to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 12. Is there any further discussion? Hearing not all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. All right, we're going to move on to our first item for today. Retirement award presented to Detective Jerome Call. Sheriff.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
Today is a happy occasion with just a little bit of sadness as we're honoring Jerome Call and his career here. So in the year 2000, Jerome began working for the Benton County Sheriff's Office as a deputy. Just put those 23 years in a little bit of perspective. In the year 2000, Bill Belichick became the Butch of the New England Patriots. Russell Crowe was a gladiator. Tom Hanks found himself stranded on an island with a volleyball. And the American people had to have our election decided by the Supreme Court in Bush v. Gore. So that kind of puts a perspective as to how far we've come in 23 years. In those same 23 years, Jerome has worked diligently for our office as a deputy, as a detective, as a leader in our office. He's answered whatever calls have come his way. He's done an excellent job. He's been a very good, very good worker for us and a great leader. And it is my pleasure to stand before the Board and everyone here and express our gratitude for all the public service Jerome has offered to us and for all the community service that Jerome has put in over those years as well. It, as I said, is a bit of heavy heart that I offer this because he will definitely be missed. But I'm very happy for Jerome, very happy for what the next chapter in his life holds for him and excited that another one of the folks that I've been able to share a career with has made it through to the other side and it's gone on to the next great thing in their life. So my pleasure to stand here and let everybody know that in just a few short days, Jerome Call will be retiring from law enforcement and moving on. So thank you, Jerome, for everything you've done for us and thank you for everything you've done for Benton County.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jerome, could we have you come up front and receive this from us? Thank you so much. My privilege to give this to you. Thank you for your years of service at Benton County.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Can you get a photo here and let me up front? Right there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerome.
I also have a plaque for you from the Sheriff's Office thanking you for your service.
Got your message. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. Appreciate it.
All right, we're going to move on to considering the 2024 Minnesota City Participation Program. Monty?
So that will turn aside.
Thanks, everybody.
Amanda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Greg, just a check on sound. You hearing us okay?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but we can't see you, but that, of course, is at your discretion.
Let me find that button then.
Okay. All right.
All right.
So we're going to share our screen here. That way you can see what's up on the screen.
Perfect.
Two. Okay, Amanda, just give me a second here.
Sure. And while you're working on that, first of all, introductions. My name is Greg Friends. I'm a program manager with Minnesota Housing. Thank you, Amanda, for inviting me to be able to address the Board today. And thank you, Benton County Board, for considering joining the Minnesota City Participation Program.
Awesome. Thank you, Greg. Do you want me just to give you a quick? I'll give you a quick introduction before you go into your presentation. So, thank you. Good morning, Chair and Board of Commissioners. I wanted to invite Greg to present some information on the Minnesota City Participation Program. It was an informational seminar that I attended about a month ago. And it was some, it's a really great program that I'd like to bring to the county. And basically, what this program is, and Greg will go into more detail, it uses tax-exempt bond housing pool allocation authorized by the Office of Minnesota Management and Budget to enable communities throughout the state to efficiently provide first-time homebuyer loans in their communities without the administrative burden of running their own program. This first-time homebuyer access, this first-time homebuyers access to the program, it's through their local lenders, so they can apply through the program through their local lenders and have access to down payment and closing cost assistance as well if they need. So it's a really great program. Benton County hasn't participated in the past, and I'd like to bring it at least to your attention so that you can at least consider it for this next upcoming year, understanding that we have a lot of issues going on with housing across the county. And this is just a tool to help those homebuyers access those pools of funding. So I'm going to turn it over to Greg. Greg, you let me know when you want me to advance to the next slide. I can certainly do that. So turn it over to you.
Absolutely. Amanda gave a great overview. You know, from 30,000 feet, it is Minnesota Housing creating kind of an infrastructure that the smaller community can use instead of trying to issue their own bond series or administer their own first-time homebuyer program that, you know, we provide all the administrative support so that communities can private label a bond offering and present that to their communities to, you know, show that they are working on housing and advertise. You can go ahead and skip this screen, Amanda.
Sure.
What I'm going to do is, I'll just summarize what I had gone through with the whole informational seminar because I'm guessing you don't want to spend the next 45 minutes learning how to apply for the program. But, you know, housing is the foundation for success. You know, Minnesota Housing, that is, you know, the focus of our agency is focusing on housing and how can we best reach communities? How we can best reach folks with affordable housing opportunities? And go ahead and change that screen, Amanda.
Do you see this?
And as I can see that, and as Amanda had pointed out, you know, this is, it's a bond revenue, so we do have all the state statutes that apply. We have all sorts of bond revenue requirements that we have to work through. And you know, we've got, you know, failings of attorneys that works through that. And if you really want to get into the weeds, you know, state statute 474A.061, you can read how the process has to flow through. Different areas, we've got cities that apply. We have counties that apply. We have larger collaborations between different HFA's that apply. We can structure this any way that makes sense for you and for your community. And go ahead and change the screen, Amanda. You can get a little glimpse there. These are the different areas that Minnesota Housing does have partnerships with communities. The cities that are called out are cities that apply. Counties that are colored are counties that we have countywide coverage in those areas. That you notice that there's a bold imprint over several counties. Those are just counties that have decided, you know, let's group together and have one initiative versus every county having a separate initiative. And go ahead and change the screen. So what are the benefits? You know, what does the county get out of, you know, filling out the paperwork? And really, it is, it's an application and signing an agreement which just says that, you know, that you want to participate and then we do send you an allocation. But further, what do you get? Well, you have the ability to promote first-time homeownership in your community. You have access to the down payment and closing cost funds that we offer. We have currently two down payment assistance programs that are deferred. The folks take those out and those are generally at 80% area median income. And they don't pay those back until they sell the house or refinance the property. So that could be sitting out for there for 20 or 30 years. And those go up to $18,000. So it's significant as far as a dollar amount. For individuals earning a little bit more than that, up to 140% of area median income, they can also get down payment assistance, but there, there's a monthly payment associated. So either way, you can get a lot of down payment assistance programs. And for those of you really close to the legislature, you'll recall that last spring, the legislature did a lot of funds to Minnesota Housing, $50 million, which will be using for first-generation homebuyer programs. So that also you'd be able to work within. Minimal administrative burden. What happens is as lenders originate loans in your community, all of Benton County, you know, I track that. I keep track of all the closings that take place and then issue you on a monthly basis the usage in your community. And it shows, you know, how many folks are taking out loans, what percentage of them are taking out the deferred down payment assistance, which was a figure of monthly down payment assistance. So I provide all of that to you. We do allocate specifically for your community, and that's based on population. So it's, every year, we get all the folks that want to apply. And then in January, we allocate those dollar amounts out. And I let the communities know that in February, and then we can track it. We then, you know, do a fair amount of marketing and resupport. I send that out monthly. I send you marketing materials that you can use to get the word out. Really, for your community, it is turnkey. It's really very, very little labor, other than like they said. We have this timeframe in January that we have to apply and sign the agreement. Amanda, go ahead and change the screen. Now, these are screens. I'm just going to kind of flip through really fast because this is something that you don't need to get in the weeds. If you do have specific questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. But Minnesota Housing has three basic programs, our startup program, our step-up program, and our fix-up program. The startup program is really the one that has the majority of the assistance. For that, you have to, you know, be a first-time homebuyer. To get the deferred payment amounts, you can, you know, make up to 80% of the area median income. But let's not spend a whole lot of time again on these slides because I don't think they're worthwhile for this group to really be looking at. But I encourage you, if you've got questions, I'm more than happy to answer them when that makes sense. You know, how it works, you know, basically, the loan the folks are taking out is, you know, your basic FHA conventional type program. We then layer on Minnesota Housing programs with startup and step-up, and then we add the down payment and closing cost assistance with those. So when somebody goes and borrows funds, they still have to qualify, just like they qualify for an FHA conventional loan because that is the base loan. And then we add kind of the assistance on top of that. Go ahead and change the screen. How it works, another borrower goes to a lender. Minnesota Housing is not a direct lender. The consumer does not come direct to Minnesota Housing for a loan. They would go to a lender in your community. So that's where you build associations and partnerships with the lenders in your community. We provide the training for those lenders if they're not already signed up with Minnesota Housing. There's over 100 lenders in the state that are currently signed up with Minnesota Housing, so there's a pretty good chance that several in your area are already signed up. But if they're not, we can do outreach to them. The lender then originates the loan. US Bank is the master servicer on these. So they'll actually service the loan, and then Minnesota Housing will hold the paper underneath the loan and provide all the funds for the down payment assistance. You can go ahead and change that screen. That goes right into how do you find the lender? If you say that's great, which lenders are currently out there? You can go to our website and you can figure out a lender that services the area, base information on our website as far as the price limits and that. I think you can kind of slide through the rest of these screens, Amanda. Again, I don't want to take up a whole lot of time from this group. I want to answer any questions you might have specifically on the Minnesota Participation Program, but it does just fall under, you know, the Minnesota Housing loans and the programs we have available. Here's the startup income limits.
Sorry.
And all of this will be changing. We're getting new information out for beginning of the year. In January, we'll be increasing the acquisition limits. And in June, we're increasing the purchase, the income limits as well. And you go ahead. The MCP requirements, basically, it's a startup program. Property for you to get credit would have to be in Benton County. The borrower's income would be added below 80% of the area median. You know, and Amanda, I think we can stop right there for the high level.
Okay.
You know, going into the application process, this group would just need to understand who as a board would have to say, yes, it's okay that the county, if it has an HFA, participate. Designate who would sign the agreement and then submit that agreement or have that agreement submitted between January 2nd and 12th this year to be part of the program. It's no cost to you at this juncture. If you do read the legislation, you'll see that we're allowed to charge a fee. We waive that fee this year. We waived it for about the last 10 years. So don't see that coming up. So currently, no cost to you and minimal labor. And then there are the benefits that we've outlined.
Greg, can you talk about the minimum allocation per community and potentially what Benton County could have applied for last year if they were participating in the program?
Well, the minimum is $100,000. I can't go off the top of my head which Benton County would have qualified for. And Amanda, you and I changed some emails that maybe included in there. Because I know, I could do a calculation, figure that out, and could certainly let you know. But the minimum's $100,000, and you can exceed your allocation. So when you look at our reports, we have several communities that really exceed their allocation quite a bit. And we just fund those from other sources then. We haven't cut anybody off on the run of funding, you know, since the program started years and years ago.
Yeah, and I do recall, like, our email communication saying, you know, last year, if Benton County would apply, it's based on population. It would have been roughly $700,000 as an allocation for those, to be, participate in those funds. And then this, you know, it changes every year, correct, Greg?
It changes. It's based on what the Minnesota budgeting assigns to us. So we get a certain pool we get. We'll find that out the first week in January. And then it depends on who applies to participate because it's then, that whole bucket is then allocated between all the different participants.
Correct.
Greg, if I could ask you a question. You talked about fees being waived, and they have been historically. What is that fee amount?
Well, it's based on allocation amount. And it would, for county, Benton size, you'd run about $500.
Okay. Thank you.
We just didn't want to, we didn't want to put any hurdles in front of anybody to participate in the program because we do think there's a value. So that's just, we absorb it at the agency level and historically have.
And Amanda, I realize we could probably get on the website and find out institution, lending institutions.
Oh, I have it for you.
So is there some local ones you could rattle off for us?
So I know that France and Bakersfield participates. And then there's also 61 lenders that participate in this program within a 25-mile radius.
Okay.
So we have plenty of lenders.
Okay.
That seems like a no-brainer.
That's, yeah, I agree.
It's really just allowing, you know, our homeowners to have access to these funds, especially if they're new, first-time homebuyers or even, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but I believe repeat homebuyers can also access the funds.
They can. They wouldn't be under the step-up program, so they wouldn't fall into the usage of the MCP allocation, but they certainly could still qualify for the step-up program and the monthly repayment loan, down payment assistance.
So does it?
Yeah, what we're receiving is it allows the communities then to really kind of private label it and get the word out, you know? And people like to know that their communities are offering some sort of program, and they look for that, or they feel more comfortable with that. You know, we've got this program we can offer, which is going to need.
Commissioner Pop.
So is this a program that's for both rural and cities? Or do you have to be a participant? Is this similar to, I had a sister-in-law that used a program through Sock Rabbits where they bought a house that was kind of dilapidated and fixed it up. As I see, they had a fix-up on there. Is that something else that can be used in that aspect, too?
Well, I'm going to get a little bit in the weeds with you here, but you asked a question, so I'll do that for you. You know, there are, it really needed fixing up that probably low-fee K program or some sort of renovation program, which we do support. We do allow those to come through our system. So, but that's even a little trickier type of financing. Our fix program is once the people are entitled, then they can, let's say that they buy a house or you've got somebody in your community that buys a house and they say, you know, I need rough or I need to replace all my windows. That's a perfect program for that. So it's a standalone second mortgage that's at a very competitive interest rates. You know, I think they're about 6% right now, which in the current market is pretty good for a second mortgage. And they allow for all sorts of different home improvements.
The other thing about this program is in order for us to receive a reallocation the following year, we have to at least spend half of the allocation that the county receives.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Heinon.
So Amanda, so if we're allocated 700,000, we use over half of it. Does the rest of that carry over to the following year or not? Or is it just start over at 700,000?
It all starts over. We, yeah.
I'll let Greg.
But, yeah. I mean, for your comfort, though, you can definitely exceed, so you don't have to worry about running out the following year. The reason we have those minimums, well, it's actually in the statute as far as we have to require a certain amount of usages. Because if you don't use half, then you wouldn't be able to participate for at least a year. If you use half, your next year's allocation will be set at the dollar amount that you use.
Okay.
Because they're trying to keep as much money freed up as possible for those that are really out participating and advertising the program.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Mr. Chair. So let's just say you've got a 25-year-old that comes in, first-time homebuyer, $220,000 home. Now, obviously, them are hard to find right now, but what would they qualify for? For, is that 18,000 or what? For the?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Assuming that, you know, if their income is under 80% of area median income, they would qualify for, yeah, $18,000 worth of assistance.
Amanda, I think on one of the first screens that Greg presented, he talked about minimal administrative work. What does that mean and who's doing it?
I will let Greg kind of touch on that a little bit, but it is, from what I understand, very minimal administrative. So Greg, do you want to just touch on that?
Absolutely. Because if I were you, that'd be the question I would really have, too. It's an application, and in the first year, you go through it. And you have to, you'll probably have some internal discussions or how are we going to apply? Are we going to apply as just a county? Did we want to try to connect with other counties? But if you make the decision you apply as a county, the application should take no more than 10 minutes to fill out. And then the agreement itself is a signature. Somebody that the Board designates as the person that can sign an agreement like that and the agreement. Did I send you some generic copies, Amanda?
Yes, you did.
Of that agreement in the application?
Yep, and I did put it in the packet. And then Greg produces a report, you know, a monthly report. And as far as, Greg, if you want to just reconfirm, as far as administrative burden on the county's part, other than the agreement, there's really not anything else that we need to do other than making sure that this agreement and the overall application is on the agenda the first of the year, correct?
Yeah, and we just need to make sure we get that agreement and that, the application agreement back between January 2nd and 12th this year. So whenever it would need to be on the Board's agenda for approval, you know, it depends kind of in the month when you, time of the month you meet.
Sure.
You know, if you would take action and approve it today, then I would say, Amanda, all I need is on the 3rd of, anyway, between the 2nd and the 12th of January, I need you to send me those backs on. That would be as far as required administrative support. And we ask that you get the word out, you know, but that's kind of up to you and your discretion on, if you want to take some of the marketing materials that we supply and put them in kiosks in your lobby. Do you want to, you know, really work on private labeling them and coming up with something that you want to have as an initiative? That's ultimately up to you.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Couple follow-up questions. You're getting back to the 80% of the median. Is that less than 80% of the median or, you know, at least 80% of the median? And then what is the median for income?
Yeah, it's 80% of the area median income, so you have to make less than that. And in greater Minnesota, I think we had that in a slide, if you want to go.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm going to go back.
It was like 111.7 or something.
Yeah.
You got to make less than that.
Yeah.
Yep.
So an individual would qualify.
Well, household size, I think, is what it's.
Okay.
So 80%.
So we go, and instead of trying to go county by county, you know, you could go, we made a decision that we wanted to just split it up into just three segments versus county by county. And so it doesn't hit exactly the Benton County, but it's down closed.
Commissioner Pop, did you have a comment?
No, I forgot what it was.
Okay, I'll go with one that I have. Were you ready for something?
Go ahead, Chair.
Back to Commissioner Pop's comment, I think, earlier. I realize that this is countywide and available in cities, but we don't need any city participation or permission for this to operate in the cities.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, Commissioner Pop.
So do you see a lot of counties that don't meet that 50% of their allocation spent?
Well, some of our counties, some of our cities. And, you know, right now, we have approximately, I think it's 45 or 46 participating. Every one of them made it last year. And last year was a little tougher, you're on real estate. I would say it's been at least three years since someone didn't make the usage check. So it's pretty minimal. Now, not to say I didn't, in the last, you know, two months of this year, I was working with a couple of the counties that were working on doing it. So we increased the amount of stuff we were mailing them and had a lot more discussions. So some are pretty tight, but most make it pretty easy.
Commissioner Heinon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amanda, is this something you're going to oversee at BEP?
Yes, I am.
So.
Commissioner Kapinski. Mr. Chair.
One quick comment again. This is an amazing program. One quick comment again, this is an amazing program, really, it's not a handout, it's a hand up.
Yeah.
And it, it's allowing people to get into homes that in this day and age is very tough. And you're not, the 18 grand is only paid back when, when you, when you sell it or?
Refinanced.
Refinance.
Commissioner Schlangen.
And even on the refinance, if you move into a, if you used a step up program, uh, with the refinance, it will subordinate that, that second, even on the refinance. If you go and get cash out or doing something like that, then you would be required to pay it back from the refinance.
Commissioner Schlangen.
Is the city of St. Cloud or Stearns County in the program already?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Both of them.
So Ma- this question's more for Amanda. So basically your role would be to make sure the county board signs it and then somehow promote it so we use up our?
Correct.
Our 50%.
Correct. Yep, I'll be, I'll be promoting it throughout the county, this program and making sure that all the lenders are aware that we have this program available.
And is this something that our, once we get the housing person in place, you're going to kind of turn that over to them?
Sure, yep, yep. Um, I just wanted to, um, rattle off a couple of statistics so, um, you can kind of understand where our county sits as far as home sales. Um, so I just had a local Realtor pull, um, some, a couple of statistics. So in, uh, 2023, between January and, um, November, there were 253 homes that sold priced at 350,000 or less. Um, and then 333 closed single family homes in Benton County from 116 to 1116 of this year. So I think we, you know, just knowing how many homes that were closed or sold and then, um, at what price range, you know, um, at 350,000 or less, um, it just kind of gives you an idea of, you know, us being able to meet that 50% allocation.
Okay, any other questions for Amanda or Greg? I guess you got a couple of options, we can look at it today or we can move it into January, so what would you like to do?
Mr. Chair, I'll, uh, I'll motion that we approve this today and have the, uh, board chair sign at the beginning of January.
And I'll second that.
All right, motion and second to approve what's been presented to us today. Is there any other discussion?
I have my question. If we went in, worked with St. Cloud or Stearns County, is there any change in the amount that we would be allotted for, for our county?
Greg, do you have?
Well, it would be a combined, it'd be a combined county then because you would be, you know, they'd take the population of Benton County and add that to the population of whatever county that you're, or county or community that you're going to go in with. And so there would be a bigger allocation, but then it'd be split by much larger geographic size.
And have St. Cloud and Stearns County used all of their allocations?
They use all their allocations, yeah. They're one of those counties that does really, really well.
I think they, they have exceeded their allocation.
I think the, for all intent purposes, this is a Benton County.
Yes.
Yeah. It's all Benton County.
That was the motion.
Yeah, okay, so a motion and a second, again, any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's carried. Thank you, Amanda, thank you Greg for your presentation. We'll make sure to get the paperwork off to you.
All right.
Thanks Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, uh, next we're going to move on to considering an amendment to the service agreement with Benton Economic Partnership to administer statewide affordable housing aid.
Mr. Chair, so it was previously the consensus of the county board to allocate Benton County's new statewide affordable housing aid to the Benton Economic Partnership, uh, to pursue the goals set forth in the recent housing study. So beginning in two, actually in December, this, this, this month, we should be receiving our first allocation of statewide affordable housing aid. Uh, that dollar amount is $120,000 approximately. And then we'll receive that in annually thereafter into two installments each year. The Benton Economic Partnership Board considered the, the amendment that's in your packet at its November meeting. And if I could, Mr. Chair, just go over very briefly, it's the, uh, next to the last page in this packet material, you can see the underlying, um, content represents the amendment to, uh, the Benton Economic Partnership Service Agreement. And, uh, essentially it says that, uh, the county will allocate its statewide affordable housing aid to the Benton Economic Partnership on an annual basis. It'll maintain those resources in a separate account. They also, uh, need to submit required reporting to the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency by December 1st of each year. I should pause for a moment and the provisions that you see here and, and, uh, in this amendment reflect the requirements of the law. So we're basically saying, okay, Benton Economic Partnership, we're delegating this to you and you of course need to, uh, carry out whatever the law requires on our behalf. So that's why you see these, it's not like I made these up and wanted to put lots of bureaucracy on. That would never happen.
Okay.
That would never happen, so I'm, I'm tossing the state under the bus on this one. Um, any unspent funds must be, must be returned to the state if they're, if they go unspent after the, uh, four years after the initial receipt. And again, that comes straight from the law, you've got to return it if you don't spend it in four years. And then lastly, again, they should report annually to the county on all the qualified projects developed and funded with these resources. So it's pretty general, it allows, it allows a BEP to pursue, again, the affordable housing goals that are set forth in the housing study. And, um, I think, you know, when the board discussed it, we realized that we really don't have the capacity internally to manage the, these resources that county historically has not been involved in housing. We don't have the ex, the internal resources to do that. And I believe Benton Economic Partnership stepped up and said, you know, we're going to develop that capacity to use these resources in a very good way. So Amanda is right here over my right shoulder, if you want to ask her any questions about this.
Any comments, Amanda, anything you want to add?
No, I just want to, uh, say thank you for allowing us to, um, you know, trust us with the allocation for the housing, um, funds that you're receiving from the, from the state. And, you know, we're, we're coming up, we're continuing to have conversations with the cities, um, and, uh, to come up with, you know, identified projects. And, uh, we also will use these funds to, you know, kind of maintain some of the, even the existing, um, affordable housing projects in and around the county. So, um, I think it's a really great opportunity for us to, to implement our current housing study and some of the, um, recommendations from that housing study and then proceed forward because we know housing is an issue in, in the county and across the state. So I appreciate the opportunity for the county to allow us to utilize those funds.
All right. Any questions for Commissioner Pinsky?
Mr. Chair, I just want to say thank you to the whole BEP membership.
Yeah.
This has really blossomed over the last few years and very proud to be a part of it. Uh, Commissioner Pop, thank you for sitting on that.
Well, the other part is that we've had a lot of, we had a lot of discussion on this about, you know, we're going to hire another person, where are they going to be housed? And, uh, thanks to, um, Falcon National Bank, they stepped up and we're going to provide us with another office at a very minimal rate. Um, so, you know, it, without, without someplace for this person, we would kind of be in a bind too because you got to have someplace for him to office out of.
Right. Great partnership.
Yeah.
Very great partnership.
Two items today you stepped up on and you just keep taking more work on and that worries me a little bit, but, uh, thank you for all of what you do.
I think from what we heard, I'm going to move to approve the amendment number two to BEP Services Agreement and them to administer Benton County Statewide Affordable Housing Act, excuse me.
And I'll second that.
All right, motion and second for that, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried, thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All righty.
All right, next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider the proposed changes to the Benton County fee schedule. So we'll have a staff report first and then we'll move into.
Yes, of course, so every year we review our countywide fee schedule, we ask our departments to take a look at those fees and, and, uh, sometimes we add some, if we're doing something new or something we're no longer doing, we take the fee off the schedule. And sometimes we update our fees if our costs to deliver the service have increased, so that's kind of a general concept. And, uh, any changes to our fee schedule must be adopted after a public hearing. Uh, so we've of course published that in the Sock Rabbit Hill Benton County News. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I'd like to invite each department that has changes to the podium for a, for a brief review of their fee schedule changes. I see the first is Auditor Treasurer, is Christine here? Uh, I see she's with us online, Christine, could you join us online or did you want to join us in the boardroom? Not sure, okay. Why don't we, if we could, is Roxanne here? Can we go ahead and skip onto Roxanne? Uh, Roxanne's changes begin on page five of your handout.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
The changes before you, uh, let's see. So for the Planning and Zoning Office, we're looking at an increase, uh, to the interim use and conditional use permit fees and the variance fees. And the increase is, um, excuse me, um, $100 for the interim use, conditional use permit applications and $200 for the variance applications. And this is, um, based on information that I pulled to show that, um, the county is, uh, not covering its costs, um, with the fees as they currently are. Um, and so the math that I've provided you, um, outlines where we would stand with those increased fees. Uh, we still would not be covering the, the total costs for staff to go through these applications, bring them to Planning Commission or Board of Adjustments, um, but it would make a difference in the, in, um, covering some of the costs. Um, the additional, uh, one would be the assessing fee, we are increasing that by $5. Um, in the event that a local assessor fails to fulfill their duties, county staff would need to step in to, um, perform those duties. And so we're just increasing that fee to cover costs as well. And then for the Recorder's Office, we are looking to, um, make copy pages, 50 cents a piece, um, in both the monthly index computer printout and, um, single use service fee. And that just is for consistency purposes, we had different fees on those, so we want to bring those together. And then removing felony name change from our, uh, fee schedule because that is now completed through the court system versus, uh, through the Recorder's Office.
All right, any questions for Roxanne? Okay, thank you.
Could we go back to Christine, yeah, page two, yeah, thank you.
Awesome.
Hers was pretty simple, just the tobacco license, increasing it from 125 to 150. Um, and look, in comparison to counties around us, it's pretty average.
Yep, okay. Any questions for Christine? Thank you.
Thank you.
What are you thinking next, Monty?
I believe Sheriff Heck would be next, I believe, on page 13. Did I say that correctly? I'm sorry, skipped over Human Services, but he's already.
That's okay, you're right there, go ahead Troy.
Sorry Sandy.
Well, sorry. Page 13.
Good morning again Commissioners. In, uh, the sheriff's office, we looked at a couple of fees as we do every year and decided that there was some that needed adjusting. Uh, the first is the fee that we charge to individuals who need to have their fingerprints taken for various background purposes. Uh, we had been charging, uh, up to today, we charged $10. When we looked at the amount of time and supplies involved in that, uh, it was discovered that our costs are closer to $15. So we're proposing to move that fee from a $10 fee to a $15 fee. The next group of changes that we're asking to be made are in our Civil Process Division. As you're aware, the sheriff's office is the, is charged with, uh, serving civil process orders from the court, uh, things that are brought to us from members of the public. In doing so, we have, uh, a process that's similar for all these, regardless of what kind of process it is. Uh, we have, uh, a nonlicensed employee who has to do all the paperwork, do the receipting in of the information of money, of all those things, and prepare it for the licensed staff member, the deputy who's going to go out and try to make attempts. When trying to figure out, uh, the average, we, we kind of looked at how far a deputy might travel, how many attempts it usually takes to serve, uh, a paper, how much time is invested by the nonlicensed staff member to process these. And we came up with a figure that it, it costs us about $77 and change to do the average, uh, civil process. Our current fee is $50, so we're asking the board to raise that fee from $50 to $75 to more closely, uh, cover the costs that we have in carrying out those duties. Some other things also associated with civil process is the, uh, writ of execution fee. So when we are charged with going and retrieving property under a writ from the court, state statute allows our office to charge a commission on that to recover again the costs that we incur in, in the time that we put into this. Currently, we are charged a 4% commission, we're looking to raise that to 4.5% to cover some of the increased costs we see in the sheriff's office. And that commission, uh, rate still falls within what's allowed under the statute. Um, we also are looking to change the fee that we charge when we have deputies stand by to assist with some civil process that may require us to, for instance, uh, seize property or to, uh, ensure that the peace is maintained. Currently, we have that fee set at $50. In all other instances, when we are contracting out our deputies' time, we ask that we, uh, are reimbursed for $75 an hour. That more, again, closely approximates the, uh, the costs that are incurred by the sheriff's office when you consider not only the wage, but the wear and turn of the vehicle and the time for us to be ready for that instance. In the same vein, we're also asking that, and a fee be added to the sheriff's office fee schedule to clarify our current policy that says if you have a civil standby request, um, that is not court ordered, but you're asking that we stand by to keep the peace, we will handle those for no charge if it's less than 15 minutes. However, if you have an extensive request that's going to require our deputies to stand by for longer than 15 minutes, we'd like to have noted in our fee schedule that, that is when the $75 per hour, uh, fee will, will, uh, kick in. And finally, um, writ of executions, these are writs that are issued from a court. When someone has owed money to someone else, we are often required to go again, seize property, levy on bank accounts, these type of things. There is a myriad of, uh, documents that petitioners are supposed to bring to the sheriff's office in specific numbers and specific types. Sometimes, uh, petitioners don't have the right documents or they need additional copies, they may need to go back and change something. And this, again, encumbers time on our staff. So we're asking that a fee be created on our fee schedule of $5 anytime someone requests us to provide copies of a writ of execution. Uh, as was mentioned by others up here, when we calculated our fees, we not only did that, uh, based on what the cost is, but we also compared our fees, our proposed fees to what surrounding counties are charging and found that all the proposed fees that we're bringing before you today are within 10 or $20 of what other counties are charging as well. Any questions?
All right, any questions for the sheriff? Thank you Troy.
Thank you.
It's page eight, page eight.
So we didn't have very many changes either, uh, on our end. Uh, we were eliminating all the fees for childcare licensing, but because the state is going to collect them instead of us and supposedly pass those funds on to us. Um, and then we eliminated the cost for Rule 25 assessments, which are CD assessments, we no longer do them ourselves. Those are done in the community and then the foot care clinics, which we also no longer do. Any questions?
All right, any questions for Sandy? Thank you Sandy.
I think the last change was, uh, your, the page 18 where, or our county attorney Carl Smith proposed adding a couple of new fees when they provide data to, uh, I believe it's private attorneys, a $5 charge for DVDs and then $25 for USB drives. A new fee. That would be it.
All right, well, we've got the report from staff, we'll open up a public hearing if there's anyone that would like to speak in regards to the proposed 24 fee schedule. Anyone at all, anyone online? Last call, if there's anyone that would like to speak in regards to 2024 proposed Benton County fee schedule. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Members, what are your wishes? Move on this?
Move approval of all additional or change of fees?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, uh, to approve any additional or changed fees for the 2024 fee schedule? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Right, Monty, consider the personnel policy revisions.
Bear with me for a second as I get oriented here. Whoops, I did not want to do that. Okay. So Mr. Chair, uh, what you have here are a number of somewhat unrelated personnel policy changes. Some, it's a mixture of, of new things that we really need to put in, in policy by January and also some cleanup. So it's a mixture of those things. Um, as you see in your agenda item, I have the page numbers noted. So I am going to move through these and go to those pages. The first batch of changes appears on page three and four. And, uh, you seen those up here on your screen? Okay. So these are related to, essentially, uh, board decisions to elevate and make a couple of areas into county departments. And consequently, tho- those folks that lead those departments would be being considered department heads. So that, um, adds the information technology director as a department head and the public health director, community health administrator, as a department head. And what that means essentially is that the positions you see listed here, their appointments are a direct function of the county board. So you make those appointments. Uh, we, we, we did some cleanup there where we took away county assessor because it's not a department head anymore. It's, it's a supervisor within land services. And we don't have a department development director anymore. That's now essentially the land services director. Is your appointed department head over land services. So that's what all this does. It elevates those two and does some cleanup. And that's the pages three and, pages three and four. Uh, what, I should just mention, you know, the distinction that, that goes with being an appoint, uh, an appointed department head is that, is that, um, you're essentially an at-will appointee. You do not have access to, um, any form of appeal process. It's contained within the personnel policies. Again, you're, you're purely an at-will person. So I want to make that clear. And I've had that conversation with affected folks and they understand that. Let's see here, if I may then move on to page nineteen and twenty. So, uh, of course, the board has agreed to add the David Drouin Associates Maintenance Program, so we wanted to get that into personnel policies. I've tried to highlight a few key, uh, points of that. You can see up on your screen, under this maintenance program, uh, the coun- the consultant shall select approximately one-third of county's classifications for review annually. Uh, they'll take some input from, uh, the administrator on various factors like turnover and, and so on and so forth. But we're looking to our consultant to make those selections of who that third is. I think that's probably best to rely upon their professional judgment to, uh, recommend who that third should be. So moving on down, a few of the things I've highlighted, uh, they'll complete that review by, and recommendations by June first each year. The importance of that date is so the board can, can include any, any reclassifications in the upcoming budget. So it's budget for the next year. Uh, and you can see here, the last sentence says, "Any changes to pay grade shall be effective January first." So that way, you see it coming, that first, you know, several months of, of, of the year, you can budget for it. And then the, any change to pay would be effective in January first. So it's included in the budget. Because it's, it, it's entirely possible that several pay, several positions, uh, would be recommended for market adjustments. So we want to make sure that's budgeted for in the upcoming year. This is something I, I want to really draw your attention to, this last section. So in the past, when a position was reclassified, the, the question was, well, where do they land on the new pay grade? Well, they would land on whatever step was an increase over where they were before. For some people, it could have been a nickel. It really depended upon where you were. So again, imagine here, you're, you're on this pay grade. You move to one that's down the table, in other words, it's a higher grade. But it's whatever step is just a bit higher than where you were. And I know for a lot of people, that was a huge letdown. If, again, if it was a few cents that you got in an increase, it, it, it came up a lot during the class comp study where people said, "Oh, yeah, I got a nickel more, thanks." Uh, so I asked Tessa, I said, "Tessa, do you have any recommendations on maybe a, a better minimum?" And she said she sees some organizations make that minimum be equivalent to a step increase. So for us, a step increase is about three point two percent. So what this basically says is that the increase that you would get would be at least three point two percent, uh, above your current hourly wage. So I want to point that out. That is a substantive difference from how we've done things for a really long time. So you might want to think about that one. It does give someone a minimum three point two percent bump rather than, again, what could be a few cents when their, when that reclassification occurs. So, um, basically also is that, as you may recall, we used to have this process where it, uh, departments could bring reclassification requests to you from January through May. Well, because we've got this new process where we're going to review a third every year, we don't need this January through May process. We've got a new process that takes care of us. Your position can get, again, within the three-year span, you're going to get reviewed. It's going to get reviewed. So that incorporates, again, the DDA maintenance program into the personnel policies. Moving on to page thirty-five, let's see here. This adds the Juneteenth holiday to the personnel policies. That is June nineteenth. Um, moving on now to, uh, earn, sick, and safe time. Forty's page forty-seven and fifty-two. So, um, this is going to take a little bit longer to review, so please, uh, thank you, uh, for allowing me some time. So let me just stop for a moment, you know, not look at the, not look at the, the, the information. So basically, the Minnesota Legislature, um, is now requiring all employers to provide forty-eight hours of earned, sick, and safe time as of January first. Excuse me. From what I understand and, and talking to our labor attorney, Susan Hanson, Susan tells me that this policy was really directed towards the service industry, the hospitality industry, with large numbers of part-time employees who received no benefits whatsoever. They didn't really acknowledge, uh, employers, particularly like governments that do have, uh, existing systems of paid time off or sick leave. Uh, so it was really oriented towards, again, those industries, service, hospitality, where historically folks did not have any form of vacation, sick leave, or benefits or otherwise. Um, so ba- as we, as you may know, we have an existing PTO system and we also have a legacy vacation and sick leave system. And there's a statement in here that, as Susan, and I should stress, Susan drafted for us this entire policy. And I greatly appreciate her doing that for us at this time. But I wanted to point out the one, uh, one policy statement here, I believe she has. Let's see here. If I've highlighted on down, yes. So it's the, it's the one I've highlighted, it's the second paragraph down, it says, "For purposes satisfying, satisfying E S S T, the county has previously negotiated, provided to non-union employees, paid time off or paid sick leave respectively, which meets or exceeds the E S S T minimum requirements under the law for full-time and part-time employees." So I wanted to stress that. So this, this isn't stacking on top of our existing PTO or sick leave. Our existing systems meet the requirements of the law. So that's, and I, as I've talked to folks in our office, it's an important point to us, us to stress. This is not in addition to our existing paid time off and sick leave. And well, I'm sure I'll sound like a broken record as, as, you know, we have conversations about this, but it's not in addition to. Let me just back up if I may. So basically, uh, under the law, you receive one hour of E, E S S T for every thirty hours that you work, up to a maximum of forty-eight hours per year. One of the things that's, that's really very different about, it is a change for us. You know, as you may know, vacation, sick leave, and PTO apply to either permanent full-time or permanent part-time. Under the law, though, it now applies to seasonal, temporary, on-call, this casual, casual place. So for example, our summer parks folks will then qualify. Uh, intermittent employees in the jail will qualify. So tho- those, those kinds of folks will now qualify for E S S T. And that's, again, that's something that doesn't occur now. Let me move on down to this. So, um, this is, this third paragraph down is a really important one. And, uh, and again, that, it's, it's something, of course, we have to communicate to our employees. So as Susan writes here, the first forty-eight hours of PTO you use, or the first forty hours of sick leave you use, will count as your use of E S S T for that year. The first forty-eight is going to count as your, as your leave. And I think, as I've, you know, gone to labor law seminars and listened to Susan, the, the primary premise behind this is, is to sort of reinforce this notion that our PTO system, our sick leave system, it satisfies the requirements of the law. This form of leave is not on top of what we exist, what we have currently. Uh, so that is what this is attempting to accomplish. And I, and I've questioned Susan about this, and she said, "This allowing you to cross-designate and say your first forty hours that you use, Jan- from January first on, that was your E S S T, is consistent with the law and consistent with guidance from the Minnesota Department of Labor." So I, I trust Susan's judgment on this one. Um, then that is the case. So moving on down, um, this, this talks about the seasonal and temporary folks, uh, receive E S S T. They begin recruiting on their first day of employment. One important, uh, distinction that we should make here is that, let's just say you're a temporary parks person and you, you recruit, you know, you get your E S S T. And then your, your employment is terminated, you don't cash that out. It's not, it won't increase our severance payouts, you will not cash that out. Yep. And I, I was kind of wondering like, well, how would you know, for example, intermittent person is going to work eighty-eight hours? And you just have to assume they're going to work at least eighty hours? Uh, it's not like we can court sort of guess and go, "Well, will they work eighty? We're not really sure." You really have to assume they're going to work at least eighty. And then that gives them the entitlement to the forty-eight hours.
Monty, do you have a, do you have an idea of approximately the number of paid-on-call temporary or seasonal employees we would have?
You know, so in the summer for parks, we hire usually four folks. In the jail, it's true, he's gone. You know, I'm going to guess with intermittent part-timers in the jail, I would say it's around seven or eight or so, part-time, excuse me, intermittent.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And also too, and I don't have the numbers on this one, we also hire, for example, seasonal water patrol in the summer. And I, I don't know how many of those we hire, the seasonal water patrol. It's not like a lot, it's, it's, it's probably four or five, it's not a lot. So i- it's definitely a new issue for us to, uh, you know, make sure in the payroll system, these folks get this and, and so on. Uh, moving on down, what I tried to do next was highlight, so there are some differences between, you know, our existing sick leave policy and E S S T. So E S S T is a little more broad, uh, in terms of who you can use it for and why you can use it. So I tried to highlight a few instances where it's more broad than our existing. So for example, I can use E S S T for the closure of the employee's place of business due to weather or other, other public emergency. So I guess if we were able to close down, people could use E S S T to cover that and not, um, anyway, i- it's a reason that they could use E S S T. Um, this is another pretty big difference. When, whose school or place of care has been closed due to weather or public emergency. So your daycare is closed because, I guess, it's the weather, it's bad weather. That's another difference. Most of these, most of these permissible uses are very similar to our existing sick leave policy. Very similar. Moving on down then, so here's some, some areas where, uh, so right now, our per- our personnel policies define who you can use sick leave for. Uh, this, the definition of E S S T is more broad. And I've tried to highlight a few areas where it is more broad. Uh, for example, it says, "A child of a sibling." Now that would be your niece or nephew, I believe, right? I'm not sure why they didn't say that. It says, "A sibling of the parent of the employee." That would be like your brother or sister, right? So.
Sure.
I didn't write the law, so, um, a child-in-law or sibling-in-law. And then lastly, up to one individual annually designated by the employee. So these are just some examples of where the, the universe of individuals for whom you can use this leave is more broad than our current sick leave policy. And I, I, as I think about it, um, I, I was looking before the meeting started, oh, how many folks are on the PTO system? Well, right now, two-thirds of our employees are PTO employees. And you think about, you can use PTO for any reason. So really, I, I don't think there's going to be lots of issues or debate perhaps about u- using PTO for these purposes. I think that the, the, the interesting discussions are going to center around those folks who are on the legacy sick leave system of, of, uh, you know, interpretations and when it's allowable, when it isn't, and so on. That might create a little more of the, the tricky interpretations. Let's see here, uh, one other difference I tried to highlight. So for example, right now, if I, if I use sick leave, and I think it, the way it works, if I use three, three or more consecutive days, the supervisor can ask me to abide a doctor's note to say, "Hey, Monty, you know, has a broken rib and he needs to be out."
Or two?
I've just, I just made that one up. Monty is out, needs to be out for three days and, and here's a doctor's note. Under E S S T.
He didn't get.
Uh, the employee themselves can provide, uh, their own statement explaining why they need to be out. In other words, it doesn't have to be from a medical professional, it could just be the employee themselves saying, "Here's why I need to be out and, and for what amount of time." So that's, that's different than our current sick leave policy. So, uh, so, uh, another thing that's a little different, you know, I've highlighted down here, under benefits and return to work. So let's just say an employee resigns and they come back within a hundred and eighty days. We need to restore to them whatever E S S T they had on the books when they left. So again, they don't, uh, they don't cash it out, but we got to restore that. It doesn't happen very often where someone comes back within a hundred and eighty days, but it is something that's new. It's something that's new. Um, lastly, um, so we need to provide a copy of this policy to all employees and Shannon in our office is taking care of that. And any new employee must be provided with this policy upon hire. And a folks in HR will take care of that required notification. So that is E S S T. I went through that pretty quickly. You all have any questions or thoughts about E S S T? Okay. Well, again, I'll just, as we talk to employees about it, and I know we've talked a lot with folks in our administrators area, uh, we'll continue to reinforce this notion, as our current policy satisfies the requirements of the law, this is not in addition to any form of leave that you currently have. And, um, hopefully that kind of keeps that message out there and that keeps it, keeps it simple. Let's move on then to eighty-seven. This is more just a miscellaneous cleanup. Eighty-seven. So we've had some instances where employees have said, "Hey, I just want to copy my personnel policy, can you just give it to me?" And in the past, our HR director said, "Okay, I'll sit down with you and we'll go over your personnel, personnel file, and then you can tell me, you know, what you want, what you don't want." And I think there were some cases where employees said, "I don't want to sit down with the HR director and go over all my records, just give me a copy." So we put this in the policy, say, "Hey, you know, if you want a copy and you want, and you, you want to pay for it, there you go, you can have a copy." So that's kind of just some cleanup and based upon some actual experience of people just wanting a copy. They didn't want to have to sit with the HR director and go over it, so. One oh-three? One oh-three is a, is a small change related to the cannabis. It just, it removes marijuana, uh, from the definition of the illegal substances because apparently it's legal now. I'm told. And the last one, which is definitely applicable to me personally, uh, let's see, it's on page one eighteen. One eighteen, um, we, we've, there's been a lot of input from folks and, you know, uh, ti- ti- things change as time goes by, you know, things evolve, what's acceptable evol- evolves. And we had this provision here about you couldn't have unnaturally colored hair and, and, and extreme hairstyles. And I think, you know, again, as, as culture evolves, as time evolves, this limitation probably is no longer necessary. And I think in, in the name of being more flexible and, uh, as an employer, it's important to remove that. And that's just one less thing, thing for folks to argue about. You know, if someone has a slightly colored hair or whatever, I, I think we have much more important things to argue about than the color of someone's hair. So that takes that out of the personnel policies. And that, Mr. Chair, concludes this round of personnel policy changes.
Mr. Shepinski?
Mr. Chair, uh, Monty, moving back to the marijuana, does that include all county employees?
Well, no. So if you're, uh, there are, I think there's seven defined positions, or- Well, no, so if you're, uh, there are, I think there's seven defined positions or types of employees for whom, you are still subject to.
Okay.
Uh, testing and of course to prohibition on use, safety sensitive, uh, public safety.
Yeah.
A C D L holder, of course, I mean, those, that, that, the law still governs, you can't, yeah. And those kinds of defined positions you cannot use and you're subject to random testing, yep.
Thank you.
Doesn't change that, no.
So going back to the, the comparables from, uh, David Drone, um, the three point two percent, is that comparable to what our comparable counties are doing? Or is that what she's seeing statewide?
Mister Chair, I did not do a comprehensive survey of other counties, I just asked Tessa for a recommendation and that's what she said, it, it approximates whatever you're doing for steps. Yeah.
So i- if somebody gets changed to a greater step, they would get the three point two plus the two point seven five, or would that be included in?
So let's, let's just, let's just say, so the way this should work is January, so it would, it'd be effective January first. So, uh, the, the, the wage table would go up, whatever percent COLA the county board agreed to. So, uh, as of, let's see how they think about this. So the, December thirty-first, they're at a certain s- salary on the old table. The whole table moves upwards by, let's just say, two and a half percent, the whole table moves upward by two and a half percent. We're gonna look at their December thirty-first salary and say, okay, they're moving up one grade. What step on that new grade is at least three point two percent more than that December thirty-first salary?
Okay.
That's where they're gonna land. So, I, you know, I'm not sure, it depends on where the person is, but again, it'd be whatever step is at least three per, three point two percent over that, December thirty-first salary.
But that three point two percent already includes the new matrix. So if you're gonna, if, if.
The only, the only thing that'll change about the pay table will be any COLA, I mean, in other words, it won't fundamentally change, there won't be any underlying, fundamental change to the, the table itself, only change will be any COLA.
Right, where I was going with that is that if you did the three point two and then you add two point seven five and a COLA, you could, you could raise that wage up near ten percent and that's not, that's not acceptable from my standpoint. I mean, if it's a, if it, if the job requires that, then maybe, but just because you might move one step doesn't, automatically allow you for a ten percent increase in wages, I don't think.
So I think there's some clarifications needed here on if you.
To address, I was attempting to address historical, uh, discontent, with step placement that has come about from classification studies. That's what I was attempting to address. Uh, because again, uh, so maybe what, uh, in the past, uh, the classification changes occurred during the year, so the COLA really wasn't part of the discussion. So let's just say again, employee would bring a request to you January through May.
Right.
Uh, and D D A said, hey, yeah, it should be, it should be, uh, it should be reclassified up a grade. That, that change would occur back to the date the board approved it, so let's just say it happened, you know, at some meeting in February. Then they would be placed at whatever step was increased over where they were, and COLA wasn't an issue because it's not January first. I guess it was more simple then, the way you're looking at it then. Uh, but the discontent was still there of saying, look, you know, the step I landed on only gave me a few cents more than I had before, and that was, that was the issue. Um, and I, I, again, I, I, I thought, hey, you know, we're moving to this, this, this new world of the D D A maintenance program. Perhaps we can fix that issue, uh, in, 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 in the process. And possibly eliminate some of that historical discontent that we've seen about step placement. I know for some people, Commissioner Pop, they, let's just say that they were, they were at step eleven of the old. They felt, hey, I should be step eleven of the new grade, in other words, I should move vertically up the table. I should go, I should stay, so they often feel like, like, let's just say, you know, visually you're here, and you move to a new grade, but then you're back here on a step. For some people, they thought they were, oh, I, I lost steps, I was downgraded, you know? So you all also deal with that psychological issue, people feeling, oh, I lost steps. I should stay at step eleven cuz I'm step eleven now.
We've seen that when they came in for negotiations so long.
Right, yeah, so that's.
It's, it's just that if that's gonna occur to a ten percent increase, I have a problem with that. On January one, if they can take the three point two minus the.
Well, you know, again, they're, I would say, you know, they're gonna get the COLA regardless, yeah, they're gonna get the COLA January first. They're gonna get that, you know?
I don't know. And, you know, if they're doing a third, that's eighty to ninety employees, if, if twenty percent of them or ten percent get a step change, that's a pretty significant dollar.
Chair, uh, I agree with you, Commissioner Pop. I'm wondering if we need to take a different look at this, Monty. Because you're right, that could be a ten percent increase for ninety to a hundred employees.
Maybe, maybe.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm just using the math of, we're gonna do eighty, eighty to ninety employees every year for three years. And even if ten percent got a change in classification, um, whether they go up or go down, they're gonna automatically get to three point two percent, I don't.
Maybe the easy answer is, um, instead of speculating about it, let's have some examples.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just pull some random examples and say, if so-and-so gets reclassified, this is what's gonna happen.
Why, sure, I, I, I could do that, right.
Or Tesla could, or whatever.
Mister Chair, I, I see both sides because.
Yeah, I mean, I do too, be from when we heard him come in, but we're opening it up. To, we could, we could be opening it up to a large.
Yeah, no, I, I, I see both sides, but the, the one thing, um, I will say on the county side is, we didn't make those steps in grades, that's their union, that's what they bargained for, that's what they pay their fees for. So if they don't understand the step, the grades, you know, three, four, five, whatever they might be, and that they might go down steps on the next grade level higher, that's not the county side. But on the other side is, is I do see that we need to try and keep employees. And if that discontent goes to them, um, actually leaving, we just, we took our own steps backwards.
Three point two percent, yeah.
You know, trying to retrain all these people, so I, I see both sides, I'm torn, I would like to see examples.
I, I would too.
Okay, so then probably and if we'd be looking at approval of these policy changes with the exception of, um.
Well, maybe, maybe what you could do is, how about this? Let me, let me suggest this to you, let's, let me get to that section, it's page nineteen and twenty. How about this? How about I recommend you approve the personal policy changes, except, the personal policy changes in this last paragraph, in other words, for now, you just leave it the same. Leave it the same, and then I can bring back some, some examples to you into next year. Cuz the, in this, the, the D D A review will start in January, but you won't see recommendations in front until probably April or May.
I'm a little confused, why would, why do we need to wait a whole year? Why couldn't we amend it in January? If, I mean, why couldn't?
Oh, no, no, right, yeah, I, 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 uh, that's my plan, it's, it's possibly the first meeting in January to bring.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard you say you'd present it.
Yeah, I meant, uh, I, 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 my point I was trying to make is that, you know, we got plenty of time to look at this. You won't be faced with the decisions on step placement for a long time.
Okay.
And what, what we should do is, is I'd like to see some data going backwards on how many actual grade changes. Because this is really gonna affect where the grade changes are.
So, and I, I should, if I could, Miss, Commissioner Pinsky is, is, um, you know, one factor, so that, well, there's gonna be two factors behind, possible changes in grade. Uh, the person's job changed sufficiently, but also market. And we kinda know more about what your job changed, but we're not really gonna know about the market, changed until Tessa does her market study. So that's gonna be a tough one for me to, to predict, is how many of these positions are gonna change because of market factors? I won't, I won't know until her market study is done. So, it's gonna, it's gonna, I think that's why I thought, it's gonna be tougher for me to predict for you, what's the cost of this? Cuz I don't know.
Impossible.
I don't know which ones will have market adjustments, and if so, how much of market adjustment they should get. I don't know, I won't know, so.
Blocking a thin line, because I, it, it affects the budgets dramatically.
But again, you will know, let's just say again, we start this next year. You'll know by, you know, June, June or July, how many positions are recommended for change, and then you all decide, do you agree with those? And then we can include that then, and then two thousand twenty-five budget levy. So it won't be an unbudgeted cost next year, we'll have time to budget for it for twenty-five.
Commissioner.
Already answered it.
Okay, anything else?
So could you, if you're inclined, if you could pu- pu- if you could approve all the policy changes but for, the one on page nineteen at the bottom of the page, and we'll leave that the same for now, and then I'll, I will, uh, develop some scenarios and some ideas to share with you first meeting in January.
Okay.
I. I think this is pretty, pretty well explained that if they're reclassified, and, and they're put at a step at the pay grade, the pay, they should not be losing wages being put at that pay grade. It should be at least a t- three point two percent higher, they'd be placed on that grade.
That's the way I propose it, right, is that you get at least a three point two percent increase.
Well, they wouldn't be losing wages when they.
No, no, no instance would anyone ever lose, no. Well, I should correct myself. Uh, you know, in reclassification studies, there's always a chance that a position could go down. Let's just say, for example, um, it's not really often market-driven, but maybe the position lost a bunch of significant duties. And those were moved to another position. Uh, let's just say it's not supervising anyone anymore. It's possible that it could go down, and what we've done in the past then is the person's wages have been frozen.
Yep.
Uh, so they never went down, they were just frozen until the table catches up with them, so.
And that, Commissioner Schlong, and I, I agree, I don't think it's a question of how it states it, it's a question of what it might cost. To do the automatic three point two.
Yeah, with all the other changes.
With the other changes, and that's why I think to have some type of, instead of speculating.
I, I believe the way this states it, even if they went down a grade, they still get the three point two, right?
Um, historically, that's, I mean, it's again, if someone was downgraded, uh.
It would stay the same.
They would stay frozen potentially, right?
And that's what we've.
The way, the way it's worked in the past is, um, is you, if you, let's just say you go down a grade. And your pay is above step eleven of the new grade, you would never get paid more than step eleven.
Till the C O.
Uh, but typically people have been within the new grade, so they just were frozen, so.
All right, what do you wish is?
Motion to approve the, uh, personnel policy, except for last paragraph on page nineteen.
We'll keep that one the same.
Keep that one the same until.
That is some study.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion of second to approve the personnel policy revisions as presented, the exception of the last paragraph of page nineteen. The discussion? Hearing on all is in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Carried, thank you, Monty.
Alrighty.
Appointment of an information technology director. Do we have anybody in mind?
Yep. Chair, the, the revisions you just adopted, uh, place the I T director as a county department head, so I think it's probably, a good idea to actually appoint an I T director as county department head, so I'm very pleased to, recommend the appointment of Steve Sting as our information technology department head.
Motion to approve. Second. All right, now we have some discussion, go ahead, Commissioner.
I was just wondering if there was anybody else up for that position.
I'm just wondering if he's qualified.
We have a motion of second, is there any other discussion?
Mister Chair, thanks Steve for all you do, you do a great job here. It's not approved yet.
I've seen people who did seconds on motions, uh, vote against it. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor, any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, move on to consider the final twenty-four Benton County budget and levy.
Trying to persuade the overhead projector to. Give me just a second. Mix all kinds of neat sound effects. All right.
Is that from a phone?
Turn the light on. Okay. Well, Mister Chair, uh, obviously this, this material was covered in detail at the recent truth and taxation meeting on December seventh. So I wasn't gonna repeat everything, maybe what I should do is, is really highlight, what has changed from proposed budget levy to final? And as you may remember, the, the, the proposed budget was about a five point five percent levy increase. Instead, it's gonna be five point one five percent. Couple of things, uh, that were different on the revenue side is we're expecting to get, um, actually just one thing. We're expecting to get this new public health infrastructure aid and, uh, beginning in two thousand twenty-four. And, uh, I believe that was just over two hundred thousand dollars of additional public health infrastructure aid. We also, uh, instead of giving a thirteen percent lev- excuse me, increase on our health insurance premiums, we're gonna get a ten percent. And that saved about ninety-four thousand. So those are two things that we're savings, uh, over the proposed budget levy. And I, I don't have this prepared to, to show you what changed from proposed to final. It's more an outright presentation of what's in the final budget levy and not highlighting the changes. Um, also, as part of discussions about the final budget levy, the board decided to restore, the engineering technician position, that in the proposed budget, that was gonna be abolished, and that'll get restored. Also, the board agreed to add a public health supervisor position. Uh, now that public health is gonna be a separate department, it adds supervisor capacity to that department. And that position's cost is fully offset by this new infrastructure aid from the state. So just a few, again, comments about the final budget levy. A five point one five percent increase or one point two million dollar increase over twenty-three. Uh, we're, as we've talked about in the past, uh, with our tax capacity growth, in this instance, sixteen point six percent, for payable twenty-four, we're seeing our tax rate continue to fall. It'll fall from an estimated forty-eight point two seven to forty-three point five four percent of tax capacity. It's down from a peak of seventy-seven point seven four percent in two thousand and thirteen. Uh, dropping on down, some of the major reasons for the increase, you could see all these various bullet points. Uh, the vast majority of the increases related to compensation benefits, the general waging adjustment, January first, step increases and health insurance, that comprises the largest part of the increase. We're seeing a, a, a nice increase in interest earnings with better interest rates on our idle cash. Uh, we still abolish two positions, the H R safety position and a social worker position. And then new positions that are added are described below, a staff appraiser, a dispatcher, and human services and eligibility specialist, a men choice social worker, and then the public health supervisory position. Uh, and the human services positions are largely offset by, almost, almost completely offset by additional revenues. And I believe that is all I wanted to offer, Mister Chair, in terms of what goes into the final budget and levy. Uh, the rest of the materials are, are, are backup, uh, which describe what we have already talked about in more detail. So at this point, Mister Chair, um, we ask you to consider the levy first and then the budget.
Getting one, that's two separate resolutions, first for the property tax levy.
Also moved to adopt the property tax levy.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, motion of second to approve the proposed twenty twenty-four Benton County property tax levy at twenty-three million seven forty-eight four seventy-eight. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried, we'll need a resolution then setting the county budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the resolution for the twenty twenty-four Benton County budget as presented. Any other discussion?
Just a, uh, few notes on that, that, uh, doing the math, there's five counties in Micah that are higher than us, out of fifteen. But when you look at the whole thing as a, uh, as the whole state, there's forty-seven counties that are higher than us and, forty counties are, that are lower than us. forty counties are that are lower than us. Um, if you take out Kitzin County, that moves us into the fifty-some percent of Ki- Kitzin County at a forty-seven percent increase. You know, we're doing good. We're we're number eight on per capita on taxes, so that's pretty good.
Any other discussion?
The eight lowest then.
Eight lowest, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions on the proposed county budget for twenty twenty-four? We have a motion a second on the floor. Hearing on all those in favor? Posed, it's carried. All right, we're gonna move on to considering the elected official salaries for twenty twenty-four.
It's a statutory duty of county boards to set the salaries for the elected officials of our county. We have an elected auditor treasurer, sheriff and county attorney. The board discussed this at a recent committee of the whole. The consensus uh uh from the from that discussion appears in the rela- resolution that is attached to this agenda. They also appear on the table. That's the final page of this packet showing you the dollar amounts and the percentage changes. So with that, Mr. Chair, ask for your motion on that resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution setting the two thousand twenty-four salaries for the audit treasurer, county attorney and the sheriff.
We have a motion a second to adopt the resolution establishing twenty-four salaries for the elected officials, auditor treasurer, county attorney and the sheriff. Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor? Posed, that's carried. Commissioner salaries for twenty twenty-four.
So again, it's also statutory duty of county boards to set the salaries for county commissioners for the upcoming year. Uh, that was discussed at the same committee of the whole and the consensus uh of the board appears in the resolution and also on the table uh that we just looked at a second ago, Mr. Chair.
I still moved to set the county board salary at two point seven five and seventy dollars per diem for twenty twenty-four.
That per diem action would be separate.
Motion for that salary.
I'll second.
Okay, motion a second, proposed salary for county commissioners for twenty twenty-four. Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor? Posed, it's carried. Move on to considering the county board per diem rate for twenty twenty-four.
That's right. So Mi- Mr. Chair, uh statutory, the county boards are eligible to receive a per diem for service on the various boards and commissions as designated by the county board. It was a consensus of the county board at the December twelfth committee of the whole to keep the per diem at the current seventy dollars, seventy dollar level.
I'm gonna move to approve the per diem rate for twenty twenty-four at seventy dollars.
Second.
Motion a second for the per diem at seventy dollars for twenty twenty-four. Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor? Posed, it's carried. Well, according to our clock, we're well past our time for the human services board, so I'll turn that over to Commissioner Hyden.
Our, thank you. Call our human services board to order, approve or amend the agenda. Sandy, do you have anything to add to the agenda?
I do not.
Board?
Move to approve the agenda, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye. Posed, motion carries. Thank you. Present agenda items one, two, three and four. What would you like to do with them?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on those? If not, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Sandy. Consider a rela- resol- a resolution to accept a donation from Medica to Benton County Public Health Human Services.
And I'll let Jaclyn speak to that.
Um, so back in November, um, we've just come to board to ask for public health to be able to apply to Medica for some funding. We submitted an application, um, Medica received it, they approved it, and they have since remitted over um an award an amount of five thousand dollars. So I'm just here today to ask that the board approve a resolution for us to accept those funds from Medica.
Any questions for Jaclyn?
Oh, nice job.
Yep, good job.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call the call the question all in favor, say aye. Posed, motion carries. Thank you, Jaclyn.
Yes, thanks for the time on the agenda.
Thank you.
Next, consider the recommended appointment of Victoria Blonigan as a representative to the St. Cloud Regional Homeless Task Force.
As you recall, the board had already um appointed um Nikki Knowles and Commissioner Hyden to the task force. Um, but we were allowed to bring three um providers with. We have not been able to receive communication about who has already been appointed to the homeless task force nor when the meeting is. Um, so we have no details, but we would like to ask that Victoria Blonigan, who is our homeless outreach worker, um be appointed to this as one of our providers.
I I think it'd be a good appointment to put her there.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye. Posed, motion carries. Thank you. Sandy, anything else?
I do not.
Thank you very much for your time here. Right now, we'll uh adjourn at ten thirty-three and turn it back over to the board chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hyden. All right, we're gonna move into our county engineer, Chris Bird. Consider the eminent domain proceedings of Cassa seven reconstruction. Chris, when you're ready.
Yeah, so we talked about this briefly at our committee of the whole yesterday. Um, actually, uh, we have a couple par- as of yesterday, we had a couple parcels that had not responded. Yesterday afternoon, um, one of those parcels responded and that was uh Maywood Church, the the entrance to the cemetery. Once again, none of the residents spoke up, but the caretaker um has agreed to uh signing uh additional highway easement to widen the roadway. But we do have um one, or actually two parcels. They happen to be common ownership, so the same owner on these two parcels. Um, and just in interest of the timeframe, to keep the project construction on schedule, um we we need to file or need to have the board uh consider adopting a resolution to uh initiate eminent domain proceedings. Um, the there was a resolution that was included in your packet. Uh, it's different than what you see on the screen here. Um, I had Michelle provide me a little bit of additional review of the resolution and since she um suggested some additional language to kind of strengthen the need uh to condemn this parcel. So I I would like to just kind of read briefly the the changes in this resolution uh compared to what was uh in your packet. Um, we just state that uh the length of the project or the project from intersection Min dot trunk highway ninety-five to the intersection of county stadium highway, um, that should say. So there's an error right there. Uh, that should say, yeah, it would say four. Uh, but uh we state that we do have the authority to acquire right of way for ramps and connecting roadways for said road project by eminent domain pursuant to that Minnesota statute. Um, we have the right to acquire the right of way prior to filing of an award by the court-appointed commissioners pursuant to that Minnesota statute. This is what's known as a quick take. So what we would do if this is adopted and approved, we would have to have a initial hearing uh before a juror- a judge and then we would ask for a possession date where the property becomes the county's prior to us having a land commissioners hearing where we discuss the value of that easement. So, yeah, we call that a quick take and that's that's what that uh that whereas is referring to right there. Uh, and then we added some additional language in there just to point out the fact that uh it was nineteen sixty when Ca- Cassa Highway seven was the last constructed, um, has exceeded its usable service life. It exhibits unsafe characteristics such as narrow roadway with steep slides, slopes that could contribute to vehicle rollovers. Um, and that it must be reconstructed to restore its service life and correct safety deficiencies. And whereas Benton County received a federal grant to pay for a portion of the construction costs and the grant becomes available in two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas it is necessary to acquire title and possession of uh of prior to filing of an award by the court-appointed commissioners, commissions because construction is scheduled to begin in May of two thousand twenty-four. Um, uh, and then whereas we identify the plat, uh plat number fifteen is what we've recorded to legally describe all the parcels. And then these are the two parcels, parcel number thirty-two of plat fifteen and thirty-seven of plat fifteen, and this is the owner. Um, there's sixty-five percent owner interest in the James R. Arthur Revocable Trust and thirty-five percent interest in and to Rory Collins. Um, so, um, therefore be it resolved, uh authorize the acquisition of permanent easement by eminent domain of the following land of Benton County right of way plat number fifteen. Once again, it's the same parcels that you see up here. And the acquisition of title and possession of the land prior to the filing of an award by the court-appointed commissioners since it is necessary because construction is scheduled to begin in May of twenty twenty-four. And to take title and possession of that land prior to filing of an award by the court-appointed commissioners pursuant to those Minnesota statutes. Um, the Benton County attorneys requested to file the necessary petitions therefore to prosecute such action to a successful conclusion or until it is abandoned, dismissed or terminated by the county or the court. Lot of legal mumbo jumbo, and I say that nicely, but our intent is to continue to negotiate with this this landowner up until the point uh that we have that hearing and we're instructed not to negotiate. We've had had, we have had communications with them. Um, it's a it's a matter of the trust has uh legal representation that they want to have their attorneys review it. We're hopeful that that's just a formality on their part and they find everything. And once again, just in the interest of time to keep the construction on schedule, um, we just need to start this process now in hopes that we can still negotiate and reach uh uh amicable conclusion.
Any questions for Chris? Commissioner Schlongen, go ahead.
Um, with the property, is there any um loss other than the property that they'll get just um compensation for? Or is there any?
Well, yeah, so there is just compensation just for the the land, um, and that's, we've come up with a a an acre. I don't remember what the acres are for this, but uh most properties do have some damages that are awarded. Whether we're taking some trees or we're needing them to remove a fence, um, uh, I can't recall on these specific specific parcels what the damages uh are, but most parcels did receive just compensation for the land and then damages uh for those extra features uh to be removed off of the the property.
So you'll pay for those or?
Yeah, so we're we're negotiating that right now and if we can reach an agreement on, we had all the parcels appraised. So we've been pr- holding pretty tight on not adjusting our land value and going contradicting what our um appraiser says that that land is valued at. Where we've been negotiating in is is um uh like the number of trees or the the value of having a fence uh reconstructed or removed and replaced outside of the new highway easement. So that's that's probably where our negotiations uh have been, um, is in those damages awards. I I'm sorry.
We'd help them recover those costs if they had occurred.
Yeah, so yep, that would be the negotiation. They have four hundred linear feet of fence and they provide a quote from a contractor that says to replace that four hundred feet of fence, it's, you know, seven hundred or seven dollars a foot or whatever it is. That's where we we can adjust the damages uh to them to replace those those features like that. Now, if we go to a commissioners hearing, um, that compensation is determined by that that commissioners hearing, those land commissioners. So, um, if we get to that point, there'll be a time where we have to submit our final written offer um to them. And then that's what the commissioners will see compared to what the the landowner would like to see as compensation and then um, yeah, then we have to pay whatever the they award to the landowners. But does that answer the question?
Any other questions for Chris? You need a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Motion a second to approve the resolution to initiate eminent domain proceedings as presented. Any other discussion?
With the final correction.
Correct, yeah, we'll get that corrected to say county stadium highway four.
Thank you. Motion a second. Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor? Posed, it's carried. All right, moving on to considering the APO solicitation for federal funding and resolution of the local match.
Yeah, so uh federal um uh grant applications for the surface transportation block grant program are due shortly after the first of the year. Um, we have a project in our five-year plan identified on Cassa three. I'll just bring that up, uh, a map so we know what we're we're talking about. That is programmed to be a full-depth reclamation from Mayhew Lake Road all the way to Popple Creek. Most of this project falls within the planning boundary of the APO. Therefore, I have to submit an application to uh the St. Cloud APO for um uh federal money for that. The money that we would be applying for is two thousand and twenty, um is it twenty-eight? Yes, two thousand and twenty-eight dollars. We have that program for two thousand and twenty-six. The program does allow what's called advanced construct. Um, if we're successful in the agreement or into the grant, we just enter an agreement saying that we agree to pay for the hundred percent of the construction costs upfront and then be reimbursed by the federal money when it becomes available in that fiscal year uh twenty-eight. So that's um what we would do because we need to re-clean that road by two thousand and twenty-six. Um, um, and and you'll see here that although the whole length of the project is goes up to Popple Creek, county road forty-four is the boundary of the St. Cloud APO, so I'm only able to uh apply for funds for projects that are within that planning boundary. So that's that's the discrepancy um there. So I'm just asking the board to consider adopting a resolution of support to that could attach to that application that's due uh in January.
Same thing.
I'll move that we support the resolution to apply for APO funds.
I'll second. Okay, motion a second. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor? Posed, it's carried. Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you. That's all I have unless there's any questions.
All right, we're gonna move into commissioner meeting updates. Who would like to start?
I can go.
Okay, Commissioner Binsky.
Pretty easy. We just had a cow for much.
I'll go second. We had a lot of cows and then uh uh career solutions, just uh maintenance to the end of the year.
Okay, I'll go next since the other two are preparing, it looks like. I'll I'll go next. Uh, December eighth, had a seven W meeting. Um, on the twelfth, of course, we had our cows with fees and the final leveling salaries. Fourteenth, the Tri-County Solid Waste uh meeting. We also had a planning commission meeting that night. We looked at a major plat, which is something we don't typically see, so you'll see that coming in front of us, I believe, in January. Um, also, there was a request for an interim use permit for another wedding venue. Um, after much discussion, which uh hindered a lot on traffic, uh that item was tabled to the following planning commission meeting. Uh, so we'll be seeing that again in January. And also, we did have a rather large uh pit in Langola Township that was approved for a large dairy operation up there. So, um and also sat on the highway, or excuse me, the cow that you talked about yesterday with the highway issues and GLT. Uh, that's all I had. Commissioner Pop.
Um, I guess the only thing I had is we had MICA, was a long drawed-out meeting. We had a um executive committee before. Uh, we're gonna have some policy updates. We're gonna have some uh personnel changes. Uh, we're asking somebody to, it's a mutual agreement, he's gonna leave uh MICA. Um, just because he doesn't provide the technical support at the legislature that we were kind of looking for, so, and he's agreed to to do that. Um, we did through, we went through all the policies throughout for throughout the whole year. I guess. Not much has changed, a little bit in environment and a little bit in human services. Um, we'll see more as this comes forward. Um they did talk about there's a hundred and thirty-one million dollars for um gonna go to prevent human warehousing coming from the state. Yeah, so they talked a little bit about that, that that'll be a big deal come January, so. We did talk a little bit about bringing in Anoka County. Again, we're gonna try and get them in because they're getting all the benefits without making the paycheck. So I think they're gonna have some, Matt Look is resigning from the board in January and they'll have a new commissioner and he's very much anti-MICA, so that should help.
All right, Commissioner Schlongen.
Um, I just had the career solutions and the cows.
Okay. All right, go into saying committee of the holes, Monte.
None of them? I just wanted to remind folks is that we do have a committee of the hole tomorrow at eight thirty. Eight thirty, uh, you'll first hear from Andy Zimney from Employee Strategies. Uh, and then you're also gonna uh discuss the sign ordinance where the rocks in afterwards, so that's tomorrow at eight thirty.
About how long are you expecting the employee one?
Uh, probably about an hour.
An hour, okay, thank you.
The total?
No, just that and then the side ordinance.
So, um, all right. Sheet that's in your packets, um, the board wished to uh schedule its next joint meeting of cities, cities, townships and the county. I survey. And the county, I surveyed our cities and townships, I received no responses from townships. I can conclude from the responses from cities that Monday night is not a good night. For a city of Foley, Tuesday nights are a challenge, cause it looks like they have their council meetings on Tuesday nights, whereas other cities tend to have them on Monday nights. So. That's the survey responses I got. So I probably would steer you towards a Wednesday night or a Thursday night for this joint meeting of. I, so I guess I'd say, I I don't have a suggested date, I'd look to you all to tell me what, where you want this into land.
Do we wanna get that done in January because you know the townships a lot of their February meeting coming up? And I would probably think that, you know, they're not too interested in having it in February.
How about the seventeenth? Or the tenth?
You know, I I'm wondering is. I don't know how townships notify their members. But I would just, we give our town clerks ample time to notify their members. They may do so by US mail, so I, that might, that might call for pushing out a little bit.
Thirty first?
Oh, yeah, huge amount of the township. Their January meetings, you know, cause a lot of them have the beginning of the month, so they're not gonna have one till January again.
So you're like, maybe the seventeenth or twenty fourth?
Seventeenth.
Twenty fourth?
Seventeenth.
I may have a conflict that night, but that's okay. So the seventeenth. Seven PM or six thirty?
Um, probably six thirty.
I might bring this back to you at your January meeting and just explore agenda items and content. That you might like to see for that.
We should also find out if 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 we're gonna be missing half the people or aft- half the either cities and townships, is it? You know what I mean? Maybe we need to push it out or something.
Well, again, I clearly we're avoiding Monday nights and we're avoiding Tuesday nights, so that's a head start. I heard no responses back from townships either way.
I don't think we've had one city there at any of them. Actually seventeen, that'll be the third Wednesday, that's Langola's township annual meeting. Or not annual, but their monthly meeting, they always meet the third Wednesday of the month.
Twenty fourth and thirty first out?
Probably better off to go to the end of the month, I think most of them get them done in the first three.
Those are out.
Twenty fourth and thirty three are out?
At the fourth or the twenty fifth?
How about Thursday night then? A Thursday night?
Uh, well. Twenty fifth's a potential planning commission meeting.
I'm actually gone the week of the twenty fourth through the thirty first, so. I'm, I won't be there.
So then it would have to be the eighteenth?
The twenty, or the twenty fourth is the BEP annual meeting and then there's that ordeal that goes on in the cities at night.
That's the twenty fifth, isn't it?
Yeah, the twenty fifth. Are we trying?
Another option is, you know, is Tuesday night, other than the first or third Tuesday night. So it was a city Foley that's first and third Tuesday, so if we avoid those, we might be.
Twenty third, there we go. That should work, no, twenty fourth, yep.
Twenty third.
Twenty third would work?
Yep, twenty third work.
Tuesday the twenty third.
What location is the next question?
Uh, well, last time was at Saint Georgetown Hall, did you like that one as as a venue or?
Works, but it's on the bottom end of the county, we maybe wanna get it.
Centralized.
Centralized with next time, year.
I I wasn't able, was the townships well attended or cities, townships probably?
We had pretty good attendance. Just said it's on the bottom end, I'd like to rotate it around, but I'm sure Saint George would. Be more than happy to have us, but.
Menon's, that's small, that's small venue there.
Should we ask Saint George again? Let's ask Saint George. What's that? Go right ahead.
I think we were asking.
We'd like to ask.
Maybe then the next one, we could go all the way over to the western part.
Sure, we go back to Watatab or something.
Tentatively Saint George Town Hall, January twenty third at six thirty.
Well, why don't we just go to Watatab right away, enjoy that, being we had it at Saint George. Ed, can you make that happen?
Depends on what they got scheduled, they're scheduled tight, but.
Well, ask and if not, we'll go back to Saint George.
I I can, I'll contact Julie. About their town hall then, okay. Alright, next I had on my list is the county boards two thousand twenty four goal setting.
All that again.
So.
Just so you know, I, and he's gonna bring this up early, but I did talk to Monty about, in my opinion, since the county boards in place, there's no reason to be waiting until March. So let's let's not move, lose three months. I think we should get something on the books in January. Monday the twenty second?
January's turning into a December this year.
It's gonna be.
Monday the twenty second?
Monday the twenty second.
No. Cause I I will be at, we'll be here on the twenty third or.
Close for MLK Day.
What about the eighth?
Yeah, but we're not.
Yeah, we're not.
Hey, he might have plans.
I'll be in town, I mean, I could.
Unless he's hunting his home down.
I it doesn't, I I'm I'm fine meeting that day.
It's up to.
Yeah, we'll leave that up to you.
No, that's fine. That day, that's fine.
How about Beth though?
Well then, well, um, I I don't think I should ask someone else to work on the holiday, I I'm happy to, but I.
So we wanna look at another date?
So we've we've got our board meeting on the sixteenth, why don't we do it right after that?
I could do that.
As long as we're done in time, I got library that night, this big library board, I gotta be there by four.
Commissioner Pinsky, if he's the chair at that time, he'll be, he'll be hacking that gavel left and right to get us out of here by ten.
You never do it in January, January's meeting.
There's always our first.
I'll bet Commissioner Pinsky could do that if he's into chair's position. I've got full confidence in him, it'll be just like this. Want to shoot for the sixteen? Eleven to one?
Where are you gonna do it?
I'm open.
In the past couple times, we've gone down to Jack and Jim's.
We talked about moving into Jimmy's.
We can't be guaranteed.
Oh, that's right.
Of of, you know. People can come over and, I mean, it is a public meeting regardless, it's still a public meeting, so, where do you, where do you want it then? Jack and Jim's?
And you wanna keep with the sixteenth, that's the first question.
You know, Jimmy's doesn't work anymore because they will not allow you to reserve their back room anymore. That's not an option.
It's not a first come, first serve.
Is everybody okay with the sixteenth after board meeting, I mean, there's I suppose a possibility of ditch authority.
We just hold that off.
We do know, we already set that hearing for that date.
The sixteenth, do we have a hearing?
We have a hearing on dish six already.
Yeah, then I don't think you wanna be.
Well, accept it.
How much is on the next agenda? I know we're.
Well, you know, the first meeting in January usually is is pretty quick, you know, the biggest thing is where you may, you choose all your board and commission appointments and assignments. I'm not expecting a lot of change, so that'll probably be pretty quick. Um, we, you you need to have your first organizational meeting of the new community health board. And, uh, you know, schedule your meetings for the year, appoint a chair, vice chair. It surely would, it shouldn't be a super long day on the, on the first meeting in January.
That would be the second, right?
The second, yeah.
If we did that, can we go right into, I I don't wanna wait till lunchtime and then meet over there. We'd go right into.
We could head right down there.
You mean have, just stay here for your your cow?
Well, no, we could go, we could go.
Head down there and then.
We start, if if it's at ten o'clock, we started it then.
Yeah, you know, so we could, for example, publish it for, I don't know, nine or whatever, that way you can start whenever, you know, it could easily start at ten then. Right, that would work.
Get on it right away and be done?
That'd be fine.
So, so on January second then? Upon conclusion of county board? Jack and Jim's goal setting, January second. You know, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to mention one thing to you while we're talking about calendars is, you know, we've often had this problem of. We, let's just say we published ditch authority to start at ten, or we publish human services to start at ten or whatever. And we're ahead of schedule and we gotta wait, and we gotta wait, and we gotta wait. I'm thinking it might be good, for example, to just on all those meetings, just say nine o'clock. And then if we're ready to go, we go right into it. And this, now this having to stop and wait and kill time or filler stuff, we just go right into it. You might, I was thinking of the, you might see that then, the first meeting in January is, is all these things, you just start at nine. And then you can go right into them. Okay, so goal setting, January second, approximately ten AM, Jack and Jim's, conclusion county board. Okay. We're not done, we're not, we're even close to being done. Okay, I know it's a shame, but board chair, we've been talking about having a committee to hold to discuss ARPA funds. I have maybe a combo, a two, a twofer for you. Uh, so Roxanne wants to discuss, uh, county boards responsible as regarding cannabis retail establishment registration. So possibly you could have a cow to talk about ARPA and then cannabis, uh, re- retail registration. Roxanne is, she personally, no, she's with us on, she's with us virtually. Roxanne, do you have any suggested dates on that one for us?
I do not.
Okay, thanks.
About the fifteenth?
Wouldn't the ARPA be, isn't it gonna be kinda on the goal setting too and like what we're?
It it could be.
Uh, yeah, I mean.
We gotta have a plan.
I think the intent was, I mean, from my perspective was that that ARPA cow was to have, I know Amanda's working with cities on this. Yeah, so. Because we're gonna keep delaying here and.
That might be good to have its own, its own discussion, yeah, so.
Throw some other dates out there.
How many more do we got coming first, Monty? Because honestly, it it's filling up just like December again.
Well, I know yesterday you spoke of scheduling, uh, open houses on the government center possibly in February. So that's the next thing, that's the next thing on my list. So.
Let's attack the ARPA one first.
So again, ARPA and cannabis registration.
What are we, did we add something?
So you 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 agreed to add GLT to your January eighth cow. And again, that's a pre-existing one, that was for emergency management and. A presentation by Brenton Marchak on off his activities. And we wanna add to the the January eighth cow GLT to bring them back, that was agreed to yesterday. So GLT would be with you about ten, ten thirty ish on the eighth, so that one's booked pretty full.
Starting at nine?
Yes.
Or whenever we get there.
Make it a whole day.
On the eighth?
Could be eight thirty.
Break for lunch and come back and talk ARPA and cannabis regi- uh, Roxanne, how does that, how's that sound to you, January eighth after lunch? Roxanne?
I think that should be fine, I was just trying to message Michelle to make sure that that worked with her. And to kinda get an idea of how long that conversation might be.
Well, you know, I think we can, um.
Michelle, I see you're with us, do you have a comment on that?
Talk, we could talk cannabis first and then leave the re- leave the leftovers for ARPA, I guess.
Yeah, I don't think it would take more than a half hour and we've already kinda drafted some documents that we would be proposing to send to townships and cities. So I don't think it'll take that long and the eighth would work for me.
Okay, you wanna, everybody make a. Run on the eighth with both? Okay, so, um. And we need to get that info out.
Yeah, you know, I I, it's it's entirely possible that we could knock all this out in the morning. You know, and then went out to break for lunch and come back and. Would you consider starting earlier than nine?
Bishop Pop, that'd be up to.
On the eighth, would you consider starting earlier than nine, than nine?
Eight thirty.
Okay, eight thirty, give us a little more time.
Five thirty.
Which animal you on now?
So eight thirty on the eighth will be, in no particular order. Emergency management, data analyst, ARPA. And cannabis reg- registration and we'll figure out the order of things between now and then. Bring your snacks.
Okay, is that it? Gonna move into February?
Okay, now we we're to the government center open houses, and I understand there was a desire to have. Maybe, maybe one in Rice, one in Sock Rapids, one here in the evening. I'm I'm going to respectfully request that you not choose between February. Uh, seventh and the sixteenth as I have my annual Arizona excursion.
And I'll throw the next wrench in, I'm gone the fifteenth to twenty second.
I'm gone the twenty first through the twenty eighth.
Well, skip February. We almost gotta go to March, now, well, what do we do?
We can't.
What's the first week, oh, sorry, the seventh, he's out, next.
You know, Mr. Chair, um, I I should just, if I, if may interject. You know, you you of course have been involved in this project from the beginning, uh, you would have folks from Contiguity there. Folks in GLT there, I don't know necessarily that my presence is absolutely.
That's true.
Mandatory. So, um, maybe I could catch some, but maybe miss one, what I was thinking it would be more of an open house format. You know, you've you've seen these where, you know, you have lots of picture boards up and you have descriptions and and you all are there to answer questions. Maybe there would be a brief presentation, but not not extensive. And and you could, you know, I think you could ask GLT to make that presentation or you could ask Contiguity to make the presentation. Or if a board member is comfortable doing that, but I was thinking be more an open house type format.
You know, I can remember the one they did up in Rice when they were looking for the overpass, there was. Nobody there but Min Dot to answer the questions and that would be like Contiguity, you know?
But I, in this situation, I think the county board better be there.
Oh, county board better be there, but.
Yeah, sure, right.
I don't think it's absolutely necessary that Monty has to be.
So, you know, again, it might, you might have a very brief introductory remarks and and then just take questions.
Uh, how about Monday the fifth or Tuesday the sixth to start off?
And those two would be okay with me.
There, then remember for those that are going, there is a conference in Alexandria on the seventh and eighth.
February sixth, fifth?
Fifth or sixth, um, that's gonna conflict with a few city meetings.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the fifth, you won't find, unless you do Foley, you won't find Rice or Sock Rapids to be able to do anything in their city halls. Wonder if we do it with their, in conjunction with their.
Meeting?
Meeting.
We have to coordinate that with them though then.
Might not be a bad idea in Sock Rapids.
You mean like right before? Before their regular, cause this means start kinda late, don't they?
Six o'clock.
So maybe from five to six, you'd have your open house?
Five o'clock, you're gonna eliminate people that are still coming from work.
It's gotta be later.
It's gotta be a little bit later than that always.
Well, we did that, when we did the, uh, the, I'm sorry, in front of the the school.
Yeah, that was in the afternoon.
That's a little different.
So Sock Rapids have a city council meeting on the fifth and do we wanna start it somewhere other than here?
It should be started there.
I mean, the very first one.
What time is their, their meeting?
So you could go Rice on Tuesday night the sixth. Is there a meeting on Monday night? You could do Foley on Monday night the fifth and Rice on on Tuesday night the sixth.
My opinion, this should start out here.
Start here?
That's my opinion.
Well, that would work the fifth then.
Yeah, we do it here.
Right?
They have city council on Tuesday.
So right, you could do.
I I'm worried that we're doing it too close together. It's like people hear about these and it's like, oh, I wanna go to one, but it's the next night, you know what I mean?
No, I, yeah, I'm not saying this, they should be back to back. I'm just saying the first one I think should be at the county. And it should be evening, probably by itself.
I think so too.
So if it if it is the fifth, you know, like at six o'clock.
Yep, well, I'm fine with that.
At the county.
Could we do it, um, the twenty ninth of, is everybody gone the twenty ninth of January?
Does the fifth not work?
Well, I'm usually busy on that day, but.
Like with committee work, do you mean, or s- other personal stuff?
Personal stuff.
What do you wanna do? You wanna look at another night or?
Is Foley the Tuesday?
Foley is the first Tuesday.
That would would take them guys out of, then you want Foley here.
How about, uh, Tuesday the thirteenth? For which who? County. In Foley here.
Okay, cause that's off, that's an off week for.
That's an off week.
I usually fly out Tuesday nights.
Minden Township has their meeting at seven, but I can.
They can. They can choose the one in Stock Rapids, so they probably would too. Minden Township, they can go to one in Stock Rapids.
But you fly out on Tuesday nights?
Generally, I fly out Tuesday nights and come back Thursdays or Fridays, so. I mean, I I try and schedule around it, but with all these meetings, it's, it wiped me out for for December.
We move into late February, that the problem is we're gonna lose some dates to go other places.
Yeah, I know. You're gonna lose some time too.
I know. Is the fifth an option, Commissioner Schlongen or not?
Whatever, we're gonna.
Then we'll make it the fifth. If it's not.
What about the twelfth?
We have extension committee that night in this room.
That's right.
See, oh, okay, I was just looking, the calendar nineteenth is President's Day, right? Yeah, nineteenth is President's Day.
Monday, the first, yeah, the twelfth I work out from.
There's meetings in here that night.
We'll do it the thirteen.
Do it somewhere else?
I think the consensus is started here.
Here first.
We wanna bring them through the building, Commissioner Schlongen. That's why we wanna have it here.
So thoughts on the fifth, works or doesn't?
I can do it.
Okay, let's do the fifth.
So that's it, that would be here in the boardroom?
Yep, and let's talk to staff or whoever we need to, if we need to offer tours or whatever it is we're gonna do. We can go over some of that stuff at the cow with GLT, but.
The boardroom, what time?
I'd say six.
Yep, six o'clock.
Sure, so we might start out with an open house format here and offer people if they wanna. Stroll through the old building they could, um, I guess we could decide you wanna sort of like take groups through, you know, have. Sort of like a tour, so to speak, you know, it might be you you're kinda like, if you got, let's just say you got. A dozen people, you maybe one of us would say, okay, you three come with me and I'll take you too and and you don't want a huge group going. Small groups going through.
What about dates for the next?
So that covers Foley on February fifth. Um, I guess, where else are we gonna have meetings? We have one in Rice and then one in Stock Rapids? Is that it? This is gonna be those three?
They make the most sense.
So where what let's focus, how about Rice then?
Council meeting, Commissioner.
The first mon- first and first and third or first and fourth Tuesday, but they will probably not have one on the nineteenth. They'll probably move it to the twentieth.
That may be s- something that we could do in conjunction with Rice. Before their meeting?
Before or, you know, set up and. I think they meet it. They changed their schedule for for the winter months and I don't know what it is.
Well, and I don't know what I'm talking about. I'm gone, so that won't work for me.
Is there any after, any meetings after this that we gotta schedule?
Uh, this is the last on our list.
Did we hash out the thirteenth for somewhere?
Oh, we started on Foley, but then we backed off.
Rice on the thirteenth I could do.
I'll have to, yeah, it's fine.
So Rice is the thirteenth?
Commissioner Pop, uh, uh, throw this out there. I mean, if it Monday the twelfth would work better for commissioners, I. We have a quad county that day. I think we could miss the evening one.
That's true. I think you guys should be there, especially if it's gonna be in Rice.
No, I understand, but I think that, I mean, maybe.
What do we do? Do we do anything at the beginning of the year for? Quad county?
Well, we're gonna have a quad county meeting that day, so in the morning. I was at night.
So so Rice February thirteenth at six, uh, at Stock Rapids then. Stock Rapids. And there, let's see. Yelling Ross told me, he said January fifteenth is open, so other than that, I got no other feedback, so. I guess that's, we're kinda shooting. What night is, what what night does a week does Stock Rapids Council meet?
First and third.
Monday or Tuesday?
The opposite, Mondays.
Mondays?
Mondays, okay.
How about Monday the twenty sixth?
Will they, what will they do with their city council meeting? Because it's.
Twenty sixth is open?
Yeah, but they they can't have one on the nineteenth.
I'm going to be out of town.
Do we got anything on the fifth at night evening? Yeah, Foley's. Oh, that's right.
What's on the fifteenth?
Do you wanna go back to go right to Stock Rapids the sixth? In conjunction with their.
This is killing. Yeah, I'll do it. It just, it.
On the sixth, do you wanna keep?
We're taking seriously, we've had so many meetings in December for mo- for working. Now I understand why you can't have a job. Now we're just took away January on everything and now we're halfway through February.
Do you wanna keep it in on Monday evenings?
I think we should. I mean, it's either that or I might have to miss one of them and it's, it is what it is, but.
I miss the Stock Rapids.
No, I don't wanna miss that one. So Tuesday the sixth.
What about the twelfth? Twelfth in Stock Rapids, thirteenth in Rice.
Is is it all possible that, I'm sorry, the 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 night of the s- the sixth would work of February sixth, is that out or is it, that's not possible?
Well, that's their council meeting.
Oh, that's the same night.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I thought they were Monday nights.
Six works for me. I know that Commissioner. Like to stay on Mondays.
I'll try it, but I I'm gonna make sure we, I mean. We gotta take a few months off of all these cows.
So which one is the most doable for you, the sixth or the twelfth?
The twelfth is more doable, but.
Then maybe you should have it on the twelfth.
So let's do it on the twelfth then. Either one of one of us can go one way and one can go the other way.
I'm fine with that. Let's go the twelfth. And then we have one the thirteenth also though. So the twelfth in Stock Rapids.
So February.
And Rice, the fifth here.
What time in Stock Rapids?
February twelfth at six, Stock Rapids. Okay, so let's recap then. Here in Foley, boardroom, February fifth at six. February twelfth at six, Stock Rapids, City Hall. And Rice, February thirteenth at six, City Hall. Council chambers. I guess we'll have to. Find out from Stock Rapids is, you know, do they want us using their community room or they let us use their council chambers, I guess we'll find. I bet they'll probably want us to be in the.
Probably be the community room.
I just.
Motion to set them.
Let's see, is that everything? Oh, I I gotta add, so Michelle sent me an email, I think I didn't. She says, I overheard the board attempted to schedule meetings on a holiday. She says, I believe that would be contrary to law. Says, no public business shall be transacted on any holiday.
We didn't do.
We didn't do it, so we're done.
Any for future reference if that ever comes up again, sorry.
Thank you, Michelle, for the reminder. All right, we have a motion a second to set the cows that's presented. Alls in favor? Posed, it's carried. We're adjourned eleven seventeen, two minutes, we'll start up ditch authority.